To close your peculiar interest in general nature thereof. Seeing none, moving to the minute, was there any errors or omissions?
Yes, Mr. Warden, I think it was page sixteen of the agenda. It's section twelve, three, three. There's an omission, meaning the recorded vote isn't on.
Okay, so as amended, was there any other errors? Okay, seeing none as amended, mover and secretary for those minutes, please. Ketchiba and Jones, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchiba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Under petitions and delegations, I do have a proclamation. And whereas September is officially recognized as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and Child Cam provides financial, emotional, and social support for families and children facing the journey through childhood cancer, from diagnosis through treatment to recovery and bereavement, and whereas the organization which supports families dealing with childhood cancer are working together to raise awareness of this disease and its devastating effect, as well as raising funds to support the families and children affected by wearing gold ribbons and pins, lighting buildings in gold, and sharing our stories, and whereas raised awareness and funds will help these families and children deal with the emotional and financial toll, now for therefore, I, Dave Mennel, Warden of the Corporation of the County of Elgin, do hereby proclaim September 2020 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and the County of Elgin and do command as thoughtful observance to all citizens of the municipality. And at twelve o'clock, there will be a flag raising out front, and I know there's going to be a number of parents there who have lost children due to cancer, and we're just looking for their support, and we will do that flag raising at twelve o'clock. So we will move on with our agendas that we've done in time. We need a motion to move into the hold. Secretary Martin, Marks, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchiba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. First report is the Warden's Activity Report, and one thing that's not in there is that I want to recognize staff, that we recognize the first line supporters at the hospitals and at our homes, but what often goes unnoticed is the staff at the county level here, and they have really grazed to the plate, and I really want to compliment them, and we wouldn't be near as successful if we didn't have our C A O Julie leading the ship. So thank you, Julie, and staff for coming up to the plate on this terrible times. The other unfortunate part is that on the Warden's Report, the Warden's Banquet is canceled. It was just too risky to even think about this. I was hoping at one time we might have a vaccine by this time, but that doesn't look like it's apparent, and so going into fall, the fall with the flu season, and it just looked too risky. So unfortunately for this year, the Warden's Banquet will be canceled, and hopefully next year we can have another Warden's Banquet. So any rate, any questions on the Warden's Report? Seeing none, mover and secretary receiving file, Jones? Martin, all in favor?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchiba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Next, we have Nancy with a report.
Good morning, Council. Through you, Mr. Warden, this is a quick report on the recent final approval of the Kempsley Farms subdivision in central Elgin. It's generally located off of Southdale Line west of Sunset Drive, and is predominantly going to be comprised of sixty-five single detached dwellings. I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Nancy. Questions for Nancy on her report? Seeing none, mover and secretary receiving file, Marks, Ketchiba, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Al?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchiba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Alan, you're there?
Good morning, yes. Good morning, Mayor and Council. In two thousand and fifteen, the County of Elgin, in partnership with the local missile partners, launched the Elgin Centers Community Improvement Planning Process throughout the county to support our local business community. The initial funding of one million dollars, which is then increased to include the tax vacancy rebate of eighty thousand dollars per year, beginning in two thousand and eighteen, is set to expire at the end of two thousand and twenty, as we know. Now, Council has set aside the eighty thousand dollars beginning next year for the Elgin Centers program as part of the ten-year financial plan. However, to assist Council determining the extent of the county's future support of Elgin Centers, the report before Council this morning provides an approach that staff undertake to analyze the program. As outlined in Appendix One of the report, the analysis will take portions of the suggested mounting strategy contained in each C I P to help measure the three outcomes or goals of the program. The three are, in the report, to stimulate economic growth diversification, to enhance the quality of place for residents and visitors, and also to improve the sustainability and stability of the tax base. To accumulate the information necessary, a survey of Elgin Centers program recipients will be undertaken, as well as the program information gathered over the years will also aid in this analysis. Now, each missile partner will also be asked and approached to help determine the impact on the assessment, which will help measure the third outcome of the program. Staff will bring the results of the analysis to current Council at the end of the year. The Elgin Centers Implementation Committee is in agreement with this approach to analyze the program. The committee consists of mainly C A Os from each missile partner. Now, it should be noted that the program continues to be popular even through the pandemic, but we did have a slight turn down in July, however, interest has strongly rebounded, and as a result, we expect all available funds to be allocated in a September intake meeting. To date, two hundred and seven applicants have been approved. For every one dollar of public sector funds invested has resulted in four dollars and ninety-eight cents in private sector investment. So the recommendation before Council this morning is to receive and file the report for information. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Alan. Questions for Alan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Alan, is the C I P committee in its entirety going to participate in the analysis? Or, you know, I'm just wondering if the whole committee is going to do this, or is this simply senior staff at the county going to do it?
Through you, Mr. Warden. It will be senior staff, however, we will be bringing the preliminary results to the committee, and the committee will then go through everything we do and get input. So it will be started with staff, but then the committee will look at everything we do and provide input.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Alan? Seeing none, mover and secretary for Alan's report. Martin, Ketchiba, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchiba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Brian, you're doing the next one?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden, through you, the County Council. This report poses a slight change of name to the dotted branch of the library system, taking the word reference out of the name, but still maintaining the strong connection to Dr. John Kenneth Galbraith. This has been prompted by our plans to install new signage in front of the branch, and in this regard, I want to thank Counselor Purcell and Dunwich Council for approving the signage concept and the permits that are required, and I'm happy to answer any questions Council may have.
Thank you, Brian. Questions for Brian on the name change? Seeing none, mover and secretary for the report. Jones? Martin, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchiba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, that motion is carried.
Thank you. Next one, we have twenty twenty funding. Who's doing that, Jim?
Jennifer Ford.
Jennifer?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to members of Council. This report is provided to update Council on the confirmed funding for two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one for ambulance services. First, a point of clarification regarding the report is that the attachments provided confirming the funding are both from Christine Elliott, Deputy Premier and Minister of Health. We have confirmed, received confirmation that our base funding has been increased to five million, one hundred thousand and seventy-nine dollars. This is an increase of seventy-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars over last year's funding, and translates to an increase in the current year budget of fifty thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars. We will share this increase with our municipal partner, the City of St. Thomas, who will realize a savings of twenty-two thousand and twenty-two dollars, and the county will retain a savings of twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars. Additionally, we have received confirmation and receipt of four hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of pandemic pay funding for the land ambulance frontline medical staff. These funds are for labor-related costs only, and any unspent funding will be needed to be returned to the ministry. The funding will be passed along to our service provider, Medevi EMS, on an aggregate basis, since they will be distributing this funding to their staff in accordance with the ministry guidelines on our behalf. Also, we are obtaining the non-labor-related pandemic information from our service provider and submitting. We do not know if that, these funds will be funded, these costs will be funded, as we haven't received any confirmation. But should we receive that confirmation, we will pass that along to Council and a report, a subsequent report. As a result, there is no impacts on the county budget at this time, and the recommendations before you are requests to receive and file the report with an action to update the current year budget to reflect the known actuals. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Good news report. Any questions or comments to Jennifer? Seeing none, motion to receive and file. Marks, Jones, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail? Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair? Counselor Ketchiba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Long-term care funding, Lisa, are you doing this one? Jim?
Yes, I am. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning, through you, Mr. Warden, to members of Council. The Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care announced the total two thousand and twenty per diem funding changes for base level of care and project funding. The Ministry of Health allocated the entire level of care funding increase to the new global level of care, which was applied in full to nursing and personal care, and this is not subject to the Case Mix Index, which resulted in an increase of fifty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars in two thousand and twenty. In addition, the C M I changes resulted in forty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-four of favorable performance. The total increase in the nursing and personal care envelope is ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five, and the two thousand and twenty budget impact of program and support is sixteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-four unfavorable. Raw food is eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight unfavorable, and other accommodation is twenty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-four unfavorable. However, the gain in nursing and personal care more than offsets the unfavorable performance in the other funding envelopes, resulting in a positive total impact of forty-five thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars across all funding envelopes. Additionally, the Ministry of Health introduced new minor capital funding to replace the structural compliance premium discontinued in March, two thousand and twenty. Homes that receive the structural compliance premium are eligible for this new funding effective April first, two thousand and twenty. Terrace Lodge and Bobier Villa meet these criteria, resulting in a gain of seventy-four thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven compared to budget. Elgin Manor is not eligible as it receives the construction funding subsidy at this time. The remaining project funding unfavorable performance is a hundred and seven dollars, which is due to differences in rounding revenue, and it brings the total of all project funding down to seventy-four thousand and eighty dollars. In total, the two thousand and twenty impact compared to budget is a gain of a hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars. And I will answer any questions if anyone has any. I'd be happy to do so.
Thank you, Lisa. Questions for Lisa on the report? Seeing none, mover and secretary receiving file, please. And Purcell, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French? Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchiba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Jim, you're doing the financial update?
Yes, I am, Mr. Warden. Through the month of July, we had unfavorable performance of thirty-nine thousand. That brings the year-to-date to a favorable three hundred and two thousand dollars. The, in the, for the July performance, ninety-four thousand negative was from the homes, and that was the result of COVID funding, costs for COVID funding, which were offsetting revenue that we received earlier in the year. We also had forty-two thousand of favorable performance in library, which was in wage savings resulting from COVID-related shortages of work and redeployment. Relative to ambulance service, due to COVID, there was the delay in the start of the enhanced service, and that's saving us thirty-six thousand dollars for the month of July, and it will begin in August until service begins this September. The other item to discuss for the financial update is a follow-up on the discussion we had last time on debt. Before you, at the end of the council meeting today, will be a bylaw, by law twenty forty, which will allow us to submit a long-term finance application to the Infrastructure Ontario for twelve million dollars of debt. The process then will be that they will provide us with a rate letter offer that I'll bring forward to the September twenty-second meeting, and we will use that then for Council to consider six million dollars of debt, and then again in November, we'll get another rate letter offer, which will then be for the additional six million dollars of debt for the total of twelve, which was proposed at last council meeting as being the debt taken on in two thousand and twenty to take advantage of the low interest rates that are currently available. That is the report, and the recommendation is before you.
Thank you, Jim. Jim, what is the current interest rate that we'd be applying for?
That will, is yet to be seen, but it's likely it's going to be somewhere around one and a half percent.
That's unheard of. Although I understand that I get a G I C renewal, it said point two five percent, so I understand. Anyway, questions for Jim? None. Motion to receive and file?
McPhail?
McPhail, Jones, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchiba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Brian, you there?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you, through you, Council. Back in two thousand and twelve, L three sixty Architecture was retained by the county completed design drawings and tender document preparation specifically for the southeast elevator addition. However, the project was deferred to give then Council an opportunity to consider alternatives associated with the construction of a new administration building. In the two thousand and twenty capital budget, the County of Elgin has identified the need to replace the original nineteen-sixties vintage elevator systems here at the administration building to address public access accessibility deficiency, as well as to maintain compliance with the province's Accessibility for Ontarians with Disabilities Act requirements. Accordingly, County Council identified just over two and a half million dollars for the southeast and northeast elevator additions and front entrance accessibility upgrades to be completed. Staff, following discussion with L three sixty Architecture, is recommending single-source reengagement of L three sixty Architecture to review and update the design drawings and tender documents associated with the southeast elevator addition. Do quickly efforts necessary to also replace the northeast elevator system and include necessary front entrance accessibility upgrades. The recommendations are before you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. This is long overdue. Anytime I get in the elevator, I usually say, Hail Mary, hoping that it gets to the right floor without crashing, so I'm glad to hear this. So questions for Brian?
Grant, it's more of a comment, I think it makes sense to go back to the same architect firm, they've already done the work, and I'm sure it'll save us money by doing so.
I agree with you, Grant. Any other questions for Brian? Mover, mover and secretary for his report, Jones and Martin, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchiba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Brian, the Port Bruce Bridge?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Once again, through you to County Council, immediately following the installation of the temporary bridge in Port Bruce, K Smart Associates Limited Consulting Engineers and Planners was awarded the engineering services to undertake the required municipal class environmental assessment, designs, and contract administration to replace the collapsed bridge under construction as we speak. Through the course of the municipal class environmental assessment, additional archaeological assessment requirements necessary to obtain ministry approval requirements, and continuing to deal with ongoing delays resulting from COVID pandemic associated with material delivery specifically, associated with the steel bridge girders, has resulted in the need to increase the scope of engineering services for the balance of the project construction duration. During preparation of K Smart's proposal, they had assumed a twenty-five-week construction duration. Unfortunately, however, based upon Hayman Construction's most recent updated project schedule, the anticipated construction duration now, as a result of these delays, will be closer to forty weeks. Despite these delays, and certainly weather dependence this time of year, Hayman Construction still anticipates bridge construction to be substantially completed and the bridge reopened to the public by year's end. Final restoration, including top court asphalt, may, however, need to be deferred and completed in the spring of two thousand and twenty-one. Despite the need to increase consulting engineering project fees, their anticipated final fees as a percentage of the project construction cost, being approximately six and a half percent, is still well below industry averages of about ten percent. The recommendations are before you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. It's good news that we're still going to have this done in two thousand and twenty. People keep asking when it's going to be done, and I said it's going to be done this year, so I don't, I'm glad you didn't make me out to be a liar. Questions for Brian?
Mr. Warden, it's Bob Purcell. Just a question, as much for Jim as it is for Brian. I assume that all these extra costs that can be associated with COVID nineteen are being captured in a separate pot for future recovery from the province and the feds?
Yes, we have a project set up where we're tracking all of the COVID costs.
Any other questions for Brian? Seeing none, mover and secretary for Brian's report? Who, by Jagair, secondary? Martin, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchiba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Zero, the motion is carried.
Okay, the next one on Graham Scott Ends, are you doing that, Steve, or is Brian?
I am doing it.
Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, through you, Council. The report is self-explanatory. Graham Scott Ends has an anchor tenant in the County Administration Building seeks a one-year increase in storage space to facilitate renovation of its employee space to accommodate COVID spacing. A one-year arrangement can be accommodated in a vacant storage suite. Given the temporary nature of the request, I'm recommending that we undertake the change through a memorandum of understanding as an addendum to the lease rather than a long-term amending agreement. Graham Scott Ends has agreed to the terms of the proposed memorandum of understanding, including immediate payment of the basic rent of nine hundred and thirty-six dollars, which is calculated in accordance with the current rate for storage space in this building. So, do you have any questions? That's my report.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Questions for Steve on his report? Graham Scott Ends has been with us for a long time, and they've been good tenants. Seeing none, mover and secretary for his report, Marks, Jones, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail? Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchiba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Connectivity Committee appointment, Catherine?
Good morning, Mr. Warden, through U T County Council. This first report discusses an additional appointment to the Connectivity Committee. At our last meeting on August eleventh, Council appointed three individuals to the committee. We have received an application from an additional individual, Mr. Joshua Kiria. He has a master's degree in information systems and experience working in telecom and net communications. He's very passionate about the community and becoming a volunteer, and he is from the town of Elmer. So the recommendation before Council is to appoint Mr. Kiria to the Connectivity.
Okay, thank you, Catherine. It's nice to see we have talented people coming on to this committee, because they know a lot more than I do about connectivity, so. Questions for Catherine on the appointment? We are having a meeting tomorrow at one, and certainly everybody will be there, and Tom, I'm going to ask you to give an update on Swift, just the new people on the committee tomorrow, if that's all right, just give you a heads up on that one?
Yes.
Okay, good. Questions for Catherine? None, mover and second for Catherine's report? Marks, Ketchbaugh, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Purcell?
Yes.
Councillor Martin?
Yes.
Councillor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Jones?
Yes.
Councillor French?
Yes.
Councillor Jaguerre?
Yes.
Councillor Ketchbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Catherine, you're doing the environmental, uh, advisory committee as well?
I am, thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, another committee, more committee activity, at its meeting held on July 14th, council established the Environmental Advisory Committee and appointed councillors Martin and Jones as the council representatives. Since this meeting, we have received six applications for council's consideration. There are six spots to be filled on this committee, so if council appoints these individuals today, we'll have a full complement on the committee. Uh, for the sake of brevity, I will not go through each individual six applicant's credentials, but they are detailed in the report as well as in their applications that were attached to the report, they have a wide range of experience, uh, education and a strong interest in environmental issues, so the recommendation is that Robert Brain, Sarah Emmons, Primrose Castle, Kim Smale, Ray Price and Michaela Lentz be appointed as members of the Environmental Advisory Committee, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Catherine, questions for Catherine on this appointment?
There's more of a comment, uh, going into this, you never know what you're gonna find in the committee, but this is quite an impressive array of, uh, talent here, and I'm looking forward to this.
Well, glad to see Kim Smale put his name in, like, Kim certainly is anybody, everybody knows around the table, Kim very well.
Worked with Kim for many, many, many years.
Any other questions for Catherine? Seeing none, mover and second for her report? Jones? Martin, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Purcell?
Yes.
Councillor Martin?
Yes.
Councillor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Jones?
Yes.
Councillor French?
Yes.
Councillor Jaguerre? Councillor Ketchbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. One more Catherine, under the COVID-19?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, the, uh, Bill 197, the COVID-19 Economic Recovery Act, uh, received royal assent on July 21st and is now in force, uh, this act made several changes to many different acts that govern the municipal sphere, uh, we are going to discuss today specifically, uh, potential changes to the Elgin County procedural bylaw as a result of changes that were made to the municipal act, uh, section 12 specifically. Um, the first, uh, the first discussion that we'll have is about the electronic participation, uh, so, uh, as council is aware, on March 20th, the Ontario Legislature held an emergency meeting where they passed the Municipal Emergency Act, which allowed members of councils and committees and appointed boards to participate electronically in meetings and to count towards quorum and have their votes counted in both open and closed session meetings. Uh, county council made an update to the bylaw at that time to allow for council and committee meetings to continue during the state of emergency. Uh, the Warden did write to the ministry on behalf of council recommending that, uh, these changes become permanent and that electronic participation be an option continuing even after the state of emergency has ended. Um, because of Bill 197, this is now an option, they have amended this in Schedule 12 to allow for electronic participation to be ongoing if council wishes. Uh, so the first question before council today will be if council wishes staff to, um, bring forward an amended procedural bylaw to continue that electronic participation even after the state of emergency has ended in Elgin County. The second issue brought forward by Schedule 12 changes to the municipal act are about proxy voting, so a section was added, uh, section 253.1, which has permitted municipalities to amend their procedural bylaws to allow an inclusion for proxy voting, uh, this is optional and at the discretion of the municipal council, uh, so a council member may appoint another council member to act as a proxy and vote for them in their absence. This proxy must be a member of the same council, um, a, a councillor can only act as a proxy for one other councillor at a time, and this does not, uh, mean that the absent council member is counted towards quorum, they are still counted as absent, um, even though someone else is voting in their place. Uh, uh, there, and also, uh, the rules about alternates that were brought in under our previous, uh, procedural bylaw amendments, uh, also play into, uh, factor, under section 267, which is the section that covers someone who's acting as an alternate for a longer term absence of a councillor, uh, that individual may appoint a proxy on that council, however, someone acting under section, uh, 268, which is just an alternate on a, a one-off basis, uh, they cannot appoint a proxy. Uh, also, all the, uh, the rules around pecuniary interests still apply, so a member who has pecuniary interest in an issue cannot appoint a proxy to vote for them on that issue, um, and the member who, uh, is voting, if they have pecuniary interest, they are also unable to vote, so the same rules apply. Um, if county, oh, a member who is appointing a proxy also must notify the clerk in advance under a process that is developed by the clerk. So if this is something that county council wishes to introduce, uh, at our council, uh, we will need to develop a process, uh, for this voting, we will need to update our procedural bylaw to include these provisions and any other policies such as our code of conduct, uh, that might be affected by the need to include these rules as well. Um, and then, of course, we would also need to do some education, um, publicly around proxies so that the public understands and that, uh, we're as transparent as possible about the process. So these are the two options, um, given, given the ability to vote electronically for members who are maybe unable to attend physically and also given the existing provisions that we have to appoint an alternate, um, this proxy, uh, provision may be unnecessary, uh, but it is up to council, uh, to decide, so the two questions today are, does council wish staff to bring forward an amended procedural bylaw regarding electronic participation? And secondly, does council wish, uh, for staff to develop a process and bring forwards, uh, a procedural bylaw amendment to include proxy voting? Um, I would be happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Catherine, uh, we need to have a thorough discussion on this and, and certainly from my point of view, I think the electronic is excellent, uh, not only for the, the COVID, but in the past, prior to COVID, we have had members that were, uh, sick or were unable to attend, and certainly with the electronic, they would be able to, to attend and voice their opinions. I do have my, uh, some reserves about proxy vote, I don't think it's necessary, especially when you have the electronic, um, I don't, it wouldn't, I mean, if you're, if you're in a hospital bed, you could still participate electronically, so I would be in favor of the electronic, but not on the proxy, so I will leave it up to, uh, the rest of council to, to have their opinions, so?
I was going to say exactly the same thing you did, I think the proxy is, I, I think the electronic is important and that it does give us all a chance to participate wherever we are, but I don't agree with the proxy either, I, to me, with electronic, then the proxy becomes unnecessary, in my opinion.
I'm seeing everybody, a number of people nodding, Grant, you had a?
I agree, yes.
Tommy?
I think with, uh, flu season coming up, you know, we could wake up with a sniffle and if you come in here with a sniffle, you're probably not gonna be very popular, so you'll give a cough and staying home, you're, you know, you, it used to be a badge of honor to fight through being sick and go to work, and that's not gonna work anymore, so with electronic, yeah, continuing that also, uh, proxy, I don't think is necessary, so I can go along with that, so I'm in favor of the first one.
Yeah?
Oh, I agree wholeheartedly with the comments being made, uh, I don't, uh, you know, keep in mind that you also have alternate, uh, opportunity, uh, within your, uh, current bylaw, so it just, uh, make the, uh, proxy voting moot, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay. Uh, Bob, any comments?
No, no problem at all.
So I'm, I'm assuming you're in, uh, concurring with what's been said?
Yes.
Okay, Dominique?
Uh, same, I'll echo everything that's been said, proxy.
Okay, Duncan?
Uh, yes, Mr. Warden, I, I took the comments that are made and, uh, certainly I'm a prime example of the, uh, efficiency of, uh, electronic meetings, I'm about a far away from civilization as you could possibly be and still participate in meetings.
Glad, glad you could be here with us, Duncan.
A little. Those trees fade.
There's a, a crow over here that I hope, uh, is not affecting the meeting, but he's squawking away at me.
Mary?
Um, I agree with what everyone's saying, Dave.
Excellent, okay, have we got a resolution?
Yep. It resolved that the reports delivered by the supervisor of legislative services be received and filed for information and fact. Council of the County of Elgin approve amendments to the procedural bylaw to provide for continued option of electronic participation after the Elgin County State of Emergence was lifted and that Elgin County Council forego including the inclusion of, uh, proxy voting in the procedural bylaw.
Okay, thank you, Julie. Mover and second for, for the report, uh, Martin? Ketchbaugh, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Purcell?
Yes.
Councillor Martin?
Yes.
Councillor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Jones?
Yes.
Councillor French?
Yes.
Councillor Jaguerre?
Yes.
Councillor Ketchbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Once again, Catherine, Integrity Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, uh, this last report I'm delivering today is in regards to the extension of the contract with, uh, Independent Resolutions Incorporated for Integrity Commissioner, Close Meeting Investigator and Ombudsman Services for the County of Elgin. On April 28th, 2020, county council approves the extension of the current contract with Independent Resolutions Incorporated as the Integrity Commissioner, Close Meeting Investigator and Ombudsman as originally provided for in the original contract in 2018. Uh, this extension would be effective January 1st, 2021 until December 31st, 2022. Uh, Independent Resolutions Incorporated agreed to roll all the existing terms and conditions with no change in fees for another two years, uh, if agreed to by Elgin County, Middlesex County and Elgin's participating municipalities. Council had directed staff at the time to poll the participating, uh, Elgin municipalities and the County of Middlesex to see their interest in continuing participation and all existing municipalities, um, have agreed and passed resolutions at their councils, uh, stating that they would like to continue, uh, with Independent Resolutions for another two years and for Middlesex County as well, the Town of Elgin has their own arrangements and they will continue with those as well. So the contract has been provided by Independent Resolutions Incorporated and in, in bylaw at the end of the council's package, so the recommendation before council is that, uh, they pass, um, bylaw 2045, being a bylaw to amend by law 1742 and extend the appointment of Independent Resolutions Incorporated as the Integrity Commissioner, Close Meeting Investigator and Ombudsman for the County of Elgin and that the Warden and Chief Administrative Officer be directed and authorized to sign that agreement, so the bylaw is at the end of the package with the extending agreements attached and then attached to that as a schedule is the original agreement, I'd be happy to answer any questions council may have.
Okay, thank you, Catherine. Questions for Catherine on the Integrity Commissioner? Seeing none, there's a recommendation before you, a mover and second with the recommendation?
McPhail?
McPhail, mover, Jones seconded, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Purcell?
Yes.
Councillor?
Yes.
Councillor?
Yes.
Yes.
Councillor French?
Yes.
Councillor Jaguerre?
Yes.
Councillor Ketchbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Julie, you're doing the next report on COVID?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to members of council, this is our monthly COVID, um, cracking start, invited to you from our emergency management team planning team, and our response remains relatively unchanged from July, uh, so this report covers August only, and I'd like to once again commend our staff for adapting to a hybrid approach to service delivery, and, um, this allows staff to split their time between working in the office and working remotely, and this will ensure that we're well positioned in the event of a second wave of COVID in our community and prepare us for the upcoming cold and flu season. Uh, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you, Julie, questions for Julie? Once again, compliment staff on, on making things work under very adverse conditions.
Just a comment, Mr. Warden, if I may?
Go ahead, Dominique.
And, and just to echo your earlier comments, um, I took the opportunity last week to visit, uh, quite a few libraries and just to visit with staff and, and thank them for their flexibility, and, um, so I just want to report that, yes, I, I think this is, it, it's a great approach, um, I know that we're being a little bit more cautious than other municipalities and some residents have expressed, uh, that, however, I, I fully support the fact that we are being more cautious and rather than using a bit of a yo-yo of offering something than taking it back because, you know, it's not going well, we're proceeding very, uh, carefully, and I think it seems to be working well, staff have, uh, very proactive in reaching out to residents, um, overall, very, very pleased and very, very much enjoyed my visit, so congratulations to everybody.
Thanks, Dominique, any other questions or comments?
Just one question, Mr. Warden?
Go ahead, Duncan.
Um, I'm just, I'm just wondering, as the, the province has, uh, has lifted their state of emergency, I'm, I'm just wondering in Elgin County here, is there a criteria that would indicate that, uh, we no longer need the state of emergency at, uh, Elgin? It seems that, uh, this is pretty much, uh, stable and, and under control, and I'm just wondering, what is the emergency?
Julie or Steve, anyone want to comment?
Well, uh, three, Mr. Warden, uh, to Councillor McPhail and other members of council, we continue to closely follow the advice provided to us from the medical officer. There is quite a bit of concern that our community may face a second wave in the coming months, so my recommendation to council would be to, uh, sit back and, um, wait before, uh, rescinding that declaration of state of emer- emergency for fear of having to, uh, enact another one in the, in the coming months in response to the second wave. Um, so at this time, there isn't much harm in having it in place, um, and keeping it in place, uh, it gives us a bit more time and flexibility to revise our procedural bylaw in order to proceed with the electronic participation in the absence of a declared state of emergency, so there are a few measures we'd like to put in place before, uh, we would contemplate, I'd suggest, uh, removing the state of emergency for Elgin.
I agree with you, Julie, and certainly with the, with the children going back to school in another week, I mean, my wife is a teacher and their, their noses ran constantly from November till March, and, and I can't believe that this COVID is gonna go magically away in November, so I agree with you and I think that we want to be cautious.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, uh, through you to Julie, my understanding is, uh, there's financial implications as well, because soon as you, uh, rescind the motion for, uh, state of emergency, any funding from the province for the COVID issues is done and it would seem to me complicate the issue if you have to restate the emergency, then, I'm not sure what Jim's, uh, view is on it, but I'm sure he'd probably rather see it continue and make his life a little easier, I believe, but...
A three, Mr. Warden, to Councillor Jones, I don't believe that the COVID funding that was, uh, given to the 444 municipalities up in Ontario was, um, allocated based on having declared a state of emergency, so everyone received the first round of funding. Um, but correct me if I'm wrong, Jim?
No, I agree with you.
Okay, thanks, Jim, any other questions for Julie on the COVID-19 report? So?
Just a comment that Central Elgin had agreed to leave it on, in place till the end of December already.
Anything else? Mover and second for Julie's report, please? Jones? Seconder? Jaguerre? All in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Purcell?
Yes.
Councillor Martin?
Yes.
Councillor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Jones?
Yes.
Councillor French?
Yes.
Councillor Jaguerre?
Yes.
Councillor Ketchbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Uh, next we have correspondence, there's nine items on correspondence, anyone wish to make comment or support, uh, for any of these nine issues? Nothing burning, I mean, motion to receive and file then? Mover and seconder, Jones, seconder? Martin, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Purcell?
Yes.
Councillor Martin?
Yes.
Councillor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Jones?
Yes.
Councillor French?
Yes.
Councillor Jaguerre?
Yes.
Councillor Ketchbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Uh, items for, uh, information, any? Statement inquiries by members, Tom?
Mr. Warden, I'd like to indicate to the members of council my intention to run for Warden in the upcoming 2021 year.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Anything else by our members? Notice of motion? Matters of urgency? Then we have nothing under closed, Julie? Uh, motion to adopt recommendations through committee the whole? Over in seconder? Ketchiba, Jones, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counsel Purcell?
Yes.
Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel Marks?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel French?
Yes.
Counsel Jiguer?
Yes.
Counsel Ketchibah?
Yes.
Sir Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Bylaws?
We had a first, second, and third read of bylaw twenty dash forty-four, being a bylaw to approve the submission of an application to Ontario Infrastructure and Land Corporation for the long-term financing of certain capital works of the county of Elgin and to authorize the entering into of a rate offer letter agreement pursuant to which the municipality will issue debentures to the Ontario Infrastructure and Land Corporation.
Yep, mover and second for that one? Jones, Martin, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counsel Purcell?
Yes.
Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel Marks?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel French?
Yes.
Counsel Jiguer?
Yes.
Counsel Ketchibah?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Other bylaws?
First, second, and third read of bylaw twenty forty-five, being a bylaw to amend by law number seventeen forty-two and extend the appointment of Independent Resolutions Inc. as the Integrity Commissioner, Close Meeting Investigator and Ombudsman for the County of Elgin pursuant to sections eight, nine, ten, eleven, two twenty-three point three, two twenty-three point one-three, and two thirty-nine point two of the municipal act two thousand and one, chapter twenty-five as amended.
Moving second by law. Marks? Ketchiba, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counsel Purcell?
Yes.
Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel Marks?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel French?
Yes.
Counsel Jiguer?
Yes.
Counsel Ketchibah?
Yes.
Sir Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you.
We had a first, second, and third read of bylaw twenty dash forty-six, being a bylaw to confirm proceedings at the municipal council of the corporation of the county of Elgin at the September eighth, two thousand and twenty meeting.
Consecutter? Jones? Martin, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counsel Purcell?
Yes.
Counsel Burton?
Yes.
Counsel Marks?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel French?
Yes.
Counsel Jiguer?
Yes.
Counsel Ketchibah?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
I think I scared everybody off with the, with the agenda. I'm sure we're done by twelve o'clock. It's only ten and we're all done. So, uh, certainly everybody has that option to, uh, come to the, the flag raising at twelve o'clock. It's up to you to, if you want to do that or stick around for the two hours, I'll leave that at your discretion. But certainly thank you for all participating this morning. So I need a mover and second ever adjournment?
Purcell.
And Purcell, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yep.
Counsel Purcell?
Yes.
Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel Marks?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel French?
Yes.
Counsel Jiguer?
Yes.
Counsel Ketchibah?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank, thank you for attending, everyone.